Meeting of July eighth, twenty nineteen to order and the first order of business is the invocation and pledge. Would you like to lead the invocation?
Sure. Please pray with me. Dear God, thank you for our recent annual conference and this is success there and the ability to go out to the beach for a couple of days and learn with other cities and towns from around the state. Thank you for the many spring and summer events that have been held and safety there and the enjoyment by residents. Thank you for our town staff and the dedication they show each and every day to those events, to our residents, to the business that we conduct here. And please be with those residents affected by today's storm and with our emergency services volunteers that assist them when there's any, any loss or trouble, God. Thank you for all that you do for us in your son Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Very pleased. And pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And since Christie's not here yet, I'm gonna go ahead and do a proclamation that we have, Joe Orlando. Would you please come up? And for those that don't know, Joe is retiring here next end of this month, hopefully.
Yes.
Okay. We just wanted to have you up and just let you know that we appreciate everything you've done for us in the last sixteen years. So we do have a proclamation for his dedicated service, Joe Orlando. Whereas Joe Orlando recognized as the founder of one of the town's landmarks, Fenwick's Fenwick Youth Books and Music Store, is retiring. And whereas Joe Orlando is a much admired businessman, advocate, believer, promoter, campaigner, supporter, and friend of the town of Lenartown, its businesses and residents. And whereas Joe Orlando helped establish Lenartown Business Association and actively participated as both officer and member these many years. Working hard to generate and build membership in the LBA. And whereas Joe has been an integral and valuable source, resource to the town during its revitalization period. And now, therefore, we the members of the Commissioners of Lenartown encourage all of us in recognizing Joe Orlando for his devotedness and commitment to the town of Lenartown and his perseverance in helping the town make the town the charming, historic, and vibrant place it is today. Signed this day, June eighth, twenty nineteen, Mayor and Town Council. You're not going anywhere. Thank you. Appreciate everything. Okay, we're gonna do the approval of minutes. Everyone should have received a copy of the minutes from last month. I do have one little correction on here, Terry on page nine, six of nine, three quarters down. You've got Mr. Herbert, but it's actually Mr. Hamlet, H A M L E T. And his address is two, three, two, four, three Clark's Rest Road. Anyone else with any additions, comments? Anyone care to make a motion?
I move to approve the June tenth, twenty nineteen minutes with the one correction as presented.
Okay.
Well, second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
I had a question on the facade of the grants granted section.
What page is that?
Page seven of nine. I apologize because I was not at the meeting. I was wondering if, I didn't understand the totals there that had been.
So the total projects are a hundred and ninety-three thousand and we're funding fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, that's what came in in requests was a hundred.
Uh, we had a sixty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-five in requests, but we only have fifty thousand, so we're, I'll give you an update on that today.
Okay.
But we will be investing fifty thousand, but the total amount of products to be completed is almost a hundred and ninety-four thousand.
So we're just, we're not going over the amount that we were.
No, just the fifty thousand.
And again, to make it clear, it was a grant, it's not something that's coming out of our general funds. Any other questions?
I did, I had just a follow-up question. When Mr. Bailey was presenting the storage unit, I think we had talked about him providing us a copy with the lease that he was gonna, that CubeSmart was gonna use, and I just didn't know if we'd seen that yet.
Probably not. I don't think they're that far.
Yeah, I don't think they've come to an agreement with him.
Okay.
Final, but I can follow up with him.
Yeah, that would be great.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I abstained. I wasn't there.
Okay, Rebecca, treasurer's report, please.
I will review the June financial information and just understand that this is obviously unhearted. And as we go through the next few months, I'll provide you current monthly reports and updates to the June thirty reports. But during June, I did transfer a hundred thousand dollars to the checking account. I do want to make a comment, but if you look at your first page, which is the cash balance page, it looks like there's an overload draft on operating account. I did fail to record that hundred thousand dollar transfer, so that'll be an adjustment. So that account's really not in my list. Looking at the budget report, there will be accounts payable to accrue, there will be revenue items to accrue, and that normally happens all the way through the end of August. Income tax, you can see now it's showing surplus. And the June receipt came in far larger than expected. The reconciling amount of that payment, the total payment was two hundred and fifteen thousand. The reconciling amount, which relates to tax year eighteen, was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Last year it was zero. So I'm not sure if a person or a computer comes up with the estimates that they send us every quarter, but obviously I think there was some underestimating done, and this is the first adjustment that they're trying to make.
Which is a good adjustment.
You said the total payment was two hundred and fifteen thousand.
That's right.
But the portion that was from?
Tax year eighteen was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
And the, the transfer that you made was from the CD to the operating?
NLGIP.
NLGIP to operating?
Yes. And the only other item we'll talk about is on the enterprise fund, where service charges are also below budget on the revenue side, but we have a significant surplus on the expenditure side in that department. So that department will still be holding at the end of the year. The FY twenty budget for that revenue item has already been dialed back. So it wasn't even budgeted as high in FY twenty as in FY nineteen. I also, for the first time at your request, included the bank reconciliation. There was some interest in council seeing that. Generally, I'm unable to get that done for the same month as the reports that I give you. So in most months, it runs behind, so what you're looking at is the May reconciliation. And it's hard to get all that done before your workshop if it's an early meeting date. It's just a timing issue. So coming up will be property tax billing. It's likely that all the residents will get their county property tax bill before their town property tax bill. And I'll just give you a brief explanation as to why. The State Assessment Office issues two property tax files. One is the preliminary file. And then at the end of July, they'll issue a supplemental file. So things that they haven't been able to get onto the tax roll at the end of June get added. I usually wait until everything is done at the end of July to do a final tax billing. It saves work to try to go back and make corrections. So town residents will likely get their county tax bill sooner than the town tax bill. But last year, it was the first week of August that it was mailed. And I'm not sure anyone has noticed yet, but we did do the upgrade to the customer web portal for the utility billing payments. It looks pretty generic on this flash page right now. It's, it's an application that I will be able to do some editing on that front page. It's just a matter of learning how to do that and using the space and it's gonna take time to get that done, but it's functioning and people are making payments using it as well. And that's it.
Any questions for Rebecca? Thank you very much. Jada, planning.
Uh, planning, we met on June seventeenth with two items on their agenda. The first item was the Smeato expansion. They were requesting their final site plan approval. That was granted. Uh, the second item was the Seymour building and the architectural modifications that need to be done to the building in order to accommodate the new restaurant that will be going in there. That was also approved. They'll meet again July fifteenth. Again, we have two items on the agenda. This time around, we're going to have the detention center expansion. They're going to be requesting their final site plan approval. And then they will also take a look at ordinance number one ninety-three, the zoning text amendments, which you'll be reviewing or introducing today.
Okay, questions for Jada? Thank you very much. And everyone should have received a copy of Christie's police report. Corporal Nelson, yeah, she's still with us. Anybody have any questions for us? Anything to add, Christie?
Uh, nope. It's busy.
It's busy.
Um, and then, so we're gonna do the, try to do a, maybe we had a blow-up movie train. We're gonna try and play it in Lenar Street Hold and then maybe some of the other neighborhoods. And then bike safety, because I've seen a whole lot of kids with no helmets, so we're trying to get in there and give them helmets that we have that have been donated and remind them to put them on, because a lot do, I have it at home, they just won't have it on.
Sure. Okay, thank you very much. Michelle, town administration's report.
My first item is ordinance number one ninety-two, which we introduced last month. And this is the property that we still have at Courthouse Drive, the second condo. We went to closing on the first one, unit three hundred. This is the offer that we accepted at the May thirteenth meeting from Alonzo Real Estate in the amount of one ninety-five five. So we introduced this ordinance as the final part of getting ready to go to closing on this. We can take action on it today. And then we would go to closing. The ordinance would be in effect in twenty days, and we can go to closing after that. It does seem like everything is still moving forward on that.
Yeah, I think they're still working with the bank.
Small business association.
Yeah, okay.
Administration. Any questions on that?
The settlement, um, will still be done with an attorney, correct?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Did they review the ordinance?
Our attorney appeared. It's the same, it's the same ordinance as we did for unit three hundred. So we, in twenty sixteen, we had public hearings and ordinances to determine that this property was surplus property. And now that we have actual contracts underway, we introduced it last month approving that contract, and then this is just kind of lacking that.
Any other comments?
And this was the last unit? There was only two?
Just two.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, the other unit we actually leased. We were leasing. Anyone care to make a motion?
So I'll move to approve ordinance number one ninety-two, authorizing the sale of unit number three oh one, located at four, one, six, six, zero Courthouse Drive.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstained.
Abstained, okay. Thank you.
Do I sign this if I abstained?
No. Well, I'll write in and say. Um, the next item is just a liquor license letter of support for Social Coffee House. At last year's Christmas on the Square, Social set up a little enclosure outside of their property on the street and served mulled cider and mulled wine, I think. They wanna do it for this, for beach party as well. They follow all the rules as far as, you know, they have one entrance and they check people IDs to make sure that they're of age to go in and out. They handled it very, very well last December. So this would be for Christmas and for beach party. They're just gonna go through the process once and they're, just for an extension of premises.
So it's just where they, they're selling it or they're, how are they doing?
They set up within cones and they have a little tent, and if people wanna go in there and have wine or.
They serve out there.
Okay, okay.
It's just an extension of their premise.
Okay.
They have extension already of their outdoor seating on a regular basis. Someone could, someone could get a glass of wine and go sit out front if there are two tables that they have there. But this will actually extend it to the street for those two events, like I said.
Gives them more room for the, these two.
For seating. They had a fire pit, I think, in there last Christmas, so it's a, it's a nice atmosphere. It draws people down there to the other businesses as well. It went really well.
All right, I move to approve a letter of support for the Social Coffee House for two, one-day extension of premise of their Class B liquor license for beach party and Christmas on the Square events.
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is just an introduction of an ordinance that Jada had mentioned earlier. We had discussed this briefly. Several years ago, in commercial marine and commercial business districts, we added the ability to, as an approved use for microbreweries. We have had a number of people who are interested in opening breweries. There's some people interested in opening distilleries around the state. It's just a really big economic development tool. There is someone who's interested in possibly going on Route Five in the Commercial Highway District, and we didn't have microbreweries in there. So what we're asking to do is to delete microbreweries and make it breweries, wineries, and distilleries. So what we'll do is we'll take this to the Planning Commission. Any zoning text amendments go to the Planning Commission. They'll make a recommendation back to you. Next month's meeting, we'll hold a public hearing, and then you can take action next month. So this is really just for introduction, and so we're asking to make those uses available in commercial business, commercial highway, and commercial marine. And commercial marine, the only location we have that zoning is at the wood. And then includes those two commercial houses at the bottom of the hill, and there had been some interest possibly in a brewery going in one of those houses. Any questions on that?
Those are already zoned, um, commercial marine.
Does Russo still own both of those or?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All right, so we'll bring that back next month with the recommendation from planning zone as well. Um, the next item is the downtown strategic plan change order to the Mahan-Richel contract. In July of twenty eighteen, Mahan-Richel was awarded a thirty-three thousand dollar contract to update the downtown economic development plan for the town. With the help of many stakeholders, we have the well-received plan, which was adopted by the council in February of twenty nineteen. There were several recommendations that were out of that plan that we included in the FY twenty budget, and they included the branding update, the wayfinding signage strategy, and the alley network plan. We had a proposal from Mahan-Richel to do all three of those plans for twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ten that we included in the budget for FY twenty. So we would like to continue that work. We've had a lot of interest from the businesses downtown who wanna see this really move forward, and a lot of people who were stakeholders in, in developing the plan, a lot of excitement. We were, everyone felt that Mahan-Richel did a really good job. We'd like to just keep that momentum going. Starting over with another consultant, we really start from square one, and all the groundwork has been laid in this strategic plan, so we're gonna just keep that momentum.
Comments, questions?
I'll just say I don't have a problem with it. I remember we came to other workshops and, I mean, they did a nice job.
They really, mm-hmm.
Were there, were there any other bids?
Um, back in, we did not take it out to bid when we issued Mahan-Richel. What we did is we had them come in for a small workshop in January of twenty eighteen to kind of get a feel for them, because they had been recommended by the state and that they did a good job and would really kind of be a nice fit for the town. So we used them at that time, and then whenever we issued the contract for the strategic, for the economic development plan, it came before the board and you guys chose Mahan-Richel, not outside of the bid process, which is legal as long as you all approve it as such. The auditors are fine with that. So there was not another bid for that, no.
And this is just an extension of that contract?
Exactly.
Do we have like an ETA as to how long this is?
They're ready to get moving. The hardest person to get on their calendar is Tripp, who was out of North Carolina, so they're waiting for this and see if we're gonna get started, so. Hopefully in August, we would really be having to, it'll bring different stakeholders together once again. Whoever it's gonna affect, the alley owners, there's the multiple owners, so they will be at the stakeholder meeting for that. So we'll have a lot of people that we need to coordinate meetings with.
So hopefully by December, we may have a new logo? Is that what, and brand all, like a plan?
I don't have a timeline yet.
Okay.
Well, I'm sure I probably do. It's probably spelled out how many meetings and such on this. But I don't recall it off the top of my head. Yeah, so if you, each scope of service is very detailed in here and so it talks about.
Like I see part.
What's included in each one.
Part one has the alley network, so I mean, would that be something that would be?
They'll be doing them, what, what we'll probably try to do is schedule like the alley network meeting at the same visit, so there's less travel expenses for, for us. And then we'll probably schedule then maybe an afternoon meeting with maybe the marketing committee on, on the branding. So it's very detailed on how many meetings and what they actually accomplish in each one.
I, I have to see that the effective date of this agreement is March eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen?
Well, that's when they gave us the estimate at that time, but we'll be doing an actual contract.
And then it'll have the updated date.
As of today's day.
Yeah.
We needed the pricing for the budget prior to the budget process.
Any other questions? Concerns?
All right, I move to approve a change order to the Mahan-Richel contract for the downtown strategic plan for additional services to implement recommendations for a branding update, wayfinding signage, strategic, strategic.
Strategy.
Strategy.
Sorry.
No, it's okay, thanks. An alley network plan in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ten dollars.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Well, no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I kept trying to say strategic.
Just go downhill off of that. Couple of things, that was all my agenda items, just to give you an update. We did receive paperwork today for our, we had submitted for an operation and maintenance grant through MDE for our wastewater treatment plant, and we qualified for thirty thousand this year because we've operated the plant, and I give staff a lot of credit for that, that plant. And so we did receive the, the grant notification today that we will receive the full thirty thousand dollars, and we completed paperwork for that. And we did have that in the budget because we really, we knew that we qualified for it. And just another quick update on the facade improvement grant. The committee met and we had a lot of good applications. As I mentioned last month, we received six, over fifty-four thousand in, in requests. We have fifty thousand to, to allocate. The committee made their recommendations. The next step, we had to submit to the Maryland Historic Trust, because any state money has to be reviewed by the Maryland Historic Trust. There are a couple of properties that we received applications from that they have questions on. I was working with them last week through email. Hopefully, we'll be able to answer those questions and that won't be a problem. The rest of the projects are fine. So I have not sent out notification letters to the applicants until I get back the word from Historic Trust to make sure how that all plays out. But everyone's really excited to get started, and it was really good to see that kind of input. And so we have also, we're working on the grant for the, the next round of fifty thousand dollars that you all approved us to move forward with. And then the other thing, I think we're gonna talk about the zip trip, but the Fox Five had asked us about placement of cameras, live feed cameras on the PNC Bank building and one at the wharf. They'll be there continuous and they'll, I guess, break to their, to, to us live. They have two other locations in Maryland. One at National Harbor and the other, I think it's in the Western Maryland, if I'm saying.
Yeah, um, yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I can't remember the other location, but that's really cool and we're, we're excited. So Beth met with them last week up on the PNC Bank to make sure they could make that work, and we have to run cables into our building here. So it looks like that's gonna move forward and that would be.
He's, he's hoping to be able to do two, one, one on the PNC Bank and one at the wharf. He was hoping originally to get a location where he'd get both the water and town, but that just can't happen here, so. He was taking it back to his, his, the higher ups to see if he can do two. He does have two in stock right now, so he's hoping he gets approval and go and do both of them.
I guess they wanna get it live by the.
By the zip trip, which is, yeah, August second.
That's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Michelle?
No.
All right, as far as my report, I was just gonna talk about MML real quick. It was, I thought, a great convention over in Ocean City, a lot of great speakers and a lot of great programs. Was able to talk to a number of the secretaries inquiring about the, the traffic signal that we are requesting. We did get a report back or a letter back saying they've got some questions on it, so we'll be addressing that or send it to the traffic group to. Lenhart to, to address those questions. But yeah, it was just a great conference and meet a lot of new people and just, it's always a good event to attend, so.
It was supposed to be a good event.
Yeah. And the other thing I did wanna mention, the zip trip was actually in North Beach on Friday, and they had a huge crowd. Now, of course, it was holiday, so, but certainly encourage everyone to come out and be on TV. August second from about seven in the morning till eleven, eleven AM, so we'll try to get a bunch of people out for that, so.
And we begin a lot of inquiries today about people that wanna come, and I mean, everyone's invited, you know, it's open, so.
That's all I had. Anybody have any, have any questions? Anybody had any, have any questions on anything? Okay. Uh, events, Tyler?
All right. A lot going on. So Sunrise Yoga returned at the Linnertown Wharf on, on June eighth. In addition, on June fifteenth, the Coastal Arts Market held their second market of the season. The next Coastal Arts Market will be held July twentieth from nine AM to three PM. Zumba Fitness Around Town continued in Janu-, or in June? January. And that'll take place every Saturday of the month at the Port of Linnertown Winery. The next one will be July thirteenth, this upcoming Saturday. Additionally, there's a Tai Chi and Wine Party that'll be held at the Port of Linnertown Winery Friday, August ninth, from six to nine PM. Additionally, there was a six-week salsa class held at Shepherd's Old Field Market that started June eighteenth, and it's on Tuesdays and Thursdays. They'll be alternating locations between Shepherd's Old Field, Port of Linnertown Winery, and the Linnertown Wharf. The next class is set tomorrow, July ninth. It's twelve dollars a person. Additionally, we had the Linnertown Summer Music Festival, and that started on June twenty-second with Six Guns South performed and about five to eight hundred people attend, attended. Additionally, they had the drop and dine, where parents could drop off their kids at the arts center, and they got to do arts and crafts, where the parents got to enjoy a night on the town without the kids. The Fourth of July weekend, we had Bob Shaller and friends performing the red, white, and blues on First Friday, and then Latrice Carr performed on Saturday. Additional events are, continue to be planned for, um, July twelfth, we have the Chesapeake Swing Band on the Square from six to nine PM. Sunrise Yoga at the Wharf, Zumba Around Town. And then August second, the Zip Trip from seven to eleven. And then August third, the Beach Party on the Square and the Wharf from four PM to nine PM. So a lot coming up this summer.
And Brandy's not here, but I think she would like us to attend Friday. I think they're having a, what is it?
A judging.
Judging contest for the best dressed?
People, I guess. Yeah.
All of us that are gonna come on our roaring twenties.
Yeah, jazz, different eras of jazz.
Okay.
Costumes. So if you're available.
We should come in costumes, too.
When is, when is that?
Friday, this Friday, yeah.
Never know.
Get our costumes.
Brandy will be, Brandy, Brandy will be sending an email out about it, so. Okay, Hayden, Community Development and Planning?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Christie, you tell us?
I've been monitoring the, uh, the water line going across the street from our house. It looks like they're just about done going across five.
Yeah, I think it'll be about one more week and a half.
Yeah. It, they've done a really nice job of keeping, you know, I, you go to sleep and you wake up in the morning and there's more plates.
Yeah.
It's pretty clean, other than, you know, a little bit of gravel. They've been doing a good job.
They haven't had a lot of complaints, it's gone.
Yeah.
Barely, so.
Just very slow.
Just slow, right, but it's, that's a big, big, big job.
Yep. Okay. Jay, Southern Maryland Municipal Association?
Well, echo a little bit what you said, Mayor. So the MML Conference, I think, was a huge success this year. We, um, it was a great time for the classes, a great time for networking. We met a lot of new people. And I was amazed how many newly elected officials there are throughout Maryland. I mean, usually we go to these every year and we know everybody, and this past year's like, wow, there's a lot of new people. So our next SMMA meeting is in September. Also, we're continuing the Board Directors of MML, and our retreat is in September. And Mayor, you're also the now official president of the Maryland Mayors Association.
Yeah, yes.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you, I think.
And once a side note, I see where the, the road connection to Leonard's Grant and Clark's Rest has officially begun, so.
Yep.
So. Yeah.
At least I sent out notice to the HOA to just let them know that it was coming. I think I sent you an email, just kind of overview of what was gonna be happening.
Yep, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mary, Business Development and Retention?
Uh, just a few things. I looked up Alonso Real Estate Investment Group, and they're in bad standing with the state of Maryland right now, so we may wanna just let them know. They should be in good standing before they buy the building. And wanted to say I was privileged to be on, looking at some of the facade grants and what people are trying to do in downtown Linnertown, and there are some fantastic things that are coming. So I'm really excited to see what people came up with and how it's gonna look. And I hope that they can get through and move it through pretty quickly. So that'd be great.
Very good.
That's it.
Yep. Anything else for the good of the order? Motion to adjourn?
Smooth.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.